Good evening, can you hear me? You guys can hear me well? Okay, good. Welcome to tonight's meeting, it looks like we have several people online listening in, listening in, so that's good to see. Today is Tuesday, October the 20th, 2020, time is now 6:00 PM. The regular go-to meeting of the City of Trinidad will now come to order, would you please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As I mentioned, we welcome to everyone that's here tonight, and we do have a lot of, we have a pretty big agenda to cover, so bear with us as we move through it, and we do have a couple of executive sessions as well, so we'll try to work, we'll move through it as, as we can, so. With that, could we get a roll call, please?
DeBono? Getoff?
Here.
Vinga?
Here.
Ogletree?
Here.
Bill? Williamson? Rico?
Here. We have two items, I mean several items, item number two, approval of the agenda, does council have any changes that they would like to make to the agenda? Could I have a motion? Could I have a motion, please?
Ogo.
Hi.
Second?
Second.
Call vote, please?
DeBono? Getoff?
Yes.
Vinga?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item three, policy item and staff reports, Mr. Valentine, do you have anything, or does staff have anything to report?
Nothing, just some air, thank you.
The only thing I want to bring up is the next meeting, which typically would have been on the 3rd, that is election night, so we are going to have to either have it on Monday or Wednesday. Audra, what would be your preference?
There's a call that's moved to, to Wednesday following election.
Okay. I believe everybody would probably be okay with that, so that would be on the 4th at 6:00 PM. Item four, petitions or communications, oral or written, is there anyone listening in that would like to, that has any comments, that would have a five-minute timeframe? Okay, don't sound like we have anyone. Item five, we have a consent agenda approval. Item five eight, approval of the regular meeting minutes of October the 5th, 2020. Item B, reappointment of Sam Coker to planning and zoning variance commission, and I see Sam is listening in, thank you, Sam. Item C, reappointment of Jonathan Norris to the planning and zoning variance commission, is Jonathan also here? I don't see him. Approval of the bills?
He's on.
He's on, okay. Approval of the bills of an amount of $1,323,969.40. Approval of the bill of the payroll from October 17th, 2020 through October the 30th, 2020, in the amount of $366,230.5. Could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Call vote, please?
DeBono? Getoff?
Yes.
Vinga?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Onto item six, we have several public hearings tonight. Item six A is the transfer of ownership of a tavern liquor license filed by Flojo's Tavern Hall LLC at 125 North Chestnut Street, formerly Jujo's Pub Incorporated. Hearing is now open, and we'll turn that over to Les, is misbehaving, is she on tonight?
Yes, I am.
Okay, Les, you want to take it from here, please?
Absolutely, Mayor, thank you, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, good, thank you. So, good evening, ma'am, could we please have her sworn first, please, since this is going to be eliciting testimony, if we could?
Please to raise your right hand and, um, um, affirm, do you swear or affirm the testimony here about the people being the truth, or will it be nothing about the truth? Please, okay, hold on, I'm running, he's behind me, you. Okay, ma'am, if you all answer audibly, please.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you both. Good evening, ma'am. Is this Florence Behaven?
Yes.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am, and council is not even heading any further. Um, ma'am, you are the representative of the applicant here this evening, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
And you are asking for a transfer of ownership of a tavern liquor license to what is a business known as Flojo's Tavern Hall LLC, is that correct?
That is correct, yes, sir.
And, and this is the former Jujo's Tavern, ma'am?
Yes, yes, it is.
Okay, at 125 North Chestnut in Trinidad?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Now, ma'am, I will tell you, I don't have many questions of you, the standard here this evening is considerably lower than it is for a, a new liquor license application, but I just want to ask you, first of all, you are a principal on this limited life corporation, is that correct?
That is correct.
And are you going to be the manager of this establishment if you're granted this transfer of liquor license?
Yes, sir, I am the managing member at the home department.
Okay. And you're, have you been in the bar business before?
I have managed bars before and bartended, even up the hill for the Garlu's Pizza here recently, owned a bar, no, sir, I have not, I have been in the bail bonds and private investigation business for 20 years.
Okay, I was just wanting to ask you about that, I, I know you were telling me about that earlier today when we spoke on the telephone, but your, your background, is it in law enforcement and in bail bonds?
That is correct, my background is 911 dispatching communications, law enforcement, investigating, and bail bonds.
Okay, well, ma'am, are you familiar with the liquor laws of the city of Colorado?
Yes, sir, I have been reading all of the liquor laws and all of the different laws for the state of Colorado for business as well.
Okay, and also the liquor laws and ordinances for the city of Trinidad?
Yes, sir.
And ma'am, you understand that if council grants your request for a transfer of ownership tonight, then you're responsible for, for the conduct of business of that establishment, including everything that comes on with respect to your liquor license, do you understand that?
Yes, sir, I am responsible and accountable for everything to do with the liquor license.
Okay, so ma'am, can you tell me, how many employees are you planning on having?
I'm hoping to have a total of six.
Okay. Are you familiar with tips training?
Yes, sir.
Have you been tips trained and certified?
I have been tips trained and certified, yes, sir.
And will you try to have your other employees tips trained and certified, so they know their responsibilities as people working under your liquor license?
Um, no, sir, I won't try, I will mandate that if somebody works for me, they will absolutely be tips certified, or they will not work.
Okay, thank you. Now, ma'am, one of the things I want to ask you, and that is, the standard for a transfer of a liquor license is that you be of good moral character, and that is defined in Trinidad municipal code, but I want to ask you, you have an entry on your criminal history?
Exactly.
And that is, that is an impact of this on the council, and I'm sorry, I don't want to talk about something that's uncomfortable, but I would like you to address that for council, if you will, please, like you did for me earlier today, that, would you tell council what happened and what the disposition of that matter was, please?
Yes, sir, I was traveling back and forth in the process of buying my property here, and I had a friend ride with me, stay a week with me here in Trinidad, and unfortunately the person did not respect me and my word, "Please not take Colorado back to Texas," that the marijuana needed to stay in Colorado. I was the driver in my vehicle, and I got pulled over, they said for speeding, and they asked to search the vehicle, and the person with me unfortunately chose to go against what they had agreed to, and had marijuana in their, their suitcase in the back of my truck. I never travel without carrying a gun, and my profession for the last 20 years has just always made me feel a little bit safer going such a long way, and I had my gun in the hip hole, which was registered legally to me, and so they also arrested me for not only the marijuana that he had, but also unlawfully carrying a weapon, since the gun was registered to me.
Okay.
I did appear in court, and they put me, they never filed the UCW or unlawfully carrying a weapon case, I went to court, they gave me what they called a pre-trial diversion, which means as long as you do not get in any more trouble, that they dismissed the case on, on the front side, different than probation or community service.
Okay.
And they did dismiss the whole part, because I have zero evidence.
Okay. And ma'am, I just want to ask you too, there was also an entry for, for having a solicitation of mine, I just wanted to explain that to council also, if you would, please.
I have contacted Sterling County about that, I can guess is that they miskeyed it on the entry to the DPS, of course DPS never suspended my, my licensing or anything of that nature, I don't know why they put it in like that, because the gentleman was absolutely a 34-year-old adult male, and I'm not sure how that happened.
Okay, so ma'am, I just want to ask you, is that the totality of your criminal history?
Yes, sir, it is all of it, I had a speeding ticket once in my twenties, that's all.
Okay, all right. And ma'am, you are of lawful age to possess a liquor license in the city of Colorado?
Yes, sir, I will gladly turn 43 in February.
Okay, all right, thank you. So, mayor and council members, I turn it over to you if you have any questions of misbehaving. Ma'am, I should just ask you one thing before I can turn it over, that is, you told council, you changed your name previously, right, to?
I did.
Okay.
I already owned my bail bonds company when I married the last time, he hyphenated his name, we got divorced, he didn't change his name, and my dad dared me to turn it to Behaven, since I was in the bail bonds business, and it was a really great marketing thing for a long time.
I understand, I just, you know, it's a little odd for me, House Council, considering putting a liquor license for a woman when you use her proper moniker, who's addressed as misbehavin', so, you know, anyway, but, but you, you understand, you swear it up here, the liquor laws of the city of Colorado, you understand that you could get in serious trouble and have your license revoked if you don't, do you understand that, ma'am?
Yes, sir, 100%.
Okay. Mayor, council members, I don't have any further questions.
Okay, Mr. Goodall, do you have any questions for Miss Behaven?
I have nothing, sir.
Ms. Ogletree?
I have just a brief question, in your application on page three, under question 13B, it asks, are you a Colorado resident, and two, both yes and no are marked, and then there's a circle around the no, but I couldn't quite tell which was which, have I been?
Yes. Yes, ma'am, I am a Colorado resident, I purchased a piece of property here, I still go, or have had to go until recently, back and forth to run off my bail bond business in Texas, and I have a place there as well, but this is where I am homestead.
Okay, and can I help you with this, I went through with Audra, Ms. Garrett, and she knows her other things, but I just wanted some clarification on that, so thank you.
Mr. DeBono? Okay. Ms. Gregor?
No questions.
Uh, Mr. Williamson?
I was, I'm curious to ask, when is the expected opening of the establishment?
We did the temporary and have already opened.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Williamson, when was the last meeting, we approved a temporary licensing of, transfer of the license, and that's what we did the last meeting.
I, I did, I did remember that, I just, I just had to observe where establishment has opened, so.
Okay.
Don't hit the plug that you're, you are serving food and barbecue, also, ma'am, take full advantage of that opportunity.
It's delicious barbecue.
I have no questions, misbehavin', at this time, if council doesn't have any other questions for you, is anybody that is listening in want to speak for or against the transfer of the ownership of the tavern liquor license? If not, hearing is closed, I would like to have a motion, and before someone makes a motion on this, could they say they would make a motion, except for or against, you know, this license transfer, so I would like to hear a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the transfer.
Could I have a second? Okay. Any further discussion? Call the vote?
DeBono? Getoff?
Yes.
Vinga?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes, and just for council's information, you know, typically, and we do not have to have one, but there's usually some findings that we sometimes have, but in this particular case, in the transfer, I talked with Ms. Garrett, and she told me it's not, we do not need findings in this particular case, so. Misbehavin', you are okay to proceed with your business, and good luck to you, and thank you for investing in Trinidad.
Thank Trinidad for having me, I found an amazing place here that I want to be forever, and this Jujo's is part of the community that I wanted to stay open, and the community to still have a place to go and enjoy, thank you all.
All right, thank you. Item 6B, 2020 budget hearing, this is for public, just to let you know, council, is that we prob, we should not probably get, because we will have a work session for us, probably next work, I think, I'm not sure when exactly, it's the next work session, that it'll be our opportunity to dive into the budget for ourselves, but tonight is for the public, so with that being said, a 2021 budget hearing, hearing is now open. Cheryl, are you on the, online?
Yes, I'm here.
Uh, do you have, do you want to go through some preliminaries, please? Go ahead.
I'm sorry, this is just the preliminary hearing for the public, like you said, council and staff will go over the preliminary budget on Monday night, but if there are any comments from the public, we will take them down.
Okay. And just for the public listening in, we have a preliminary cost, our, our budget of $43,403,658, so is there anyone listening in tonight that has a comment about the 2020 budget, 2021 budget? Does not appear that we have anyone wanting to speak for or against the budget, the current budget, or upcoming budget, so with that, we will close this hearing, thank you very much. Item C, we have a 2021 capital budget estimate hearing, same thing, hearing is now open, and Cheryl, do you want to give us some information on that, please?
The current capital budget, the current preliminary capital budget is sitting at $8,486,000, again, this is open to the public for any comments or suggestions for the budget, but that's where we are sitting right now with the preliminaries.
Okay. Uh, is there anyone that is listening in that has any comment on the 2021 capital budget estimate hearing, to speak for or against? I don't hear any, so we will close the hearing. Item D, public hearing for consideration of inordinance, vacating a 50-foot wide portion of right-of-way of unimproved College Avenue abutting Lot 26, Block 25, Taylor and Swallows addition of the city of Trinidad, Los Angeles County. Hearing is now open, Georgie, do you want to give us some information, please?
Yes, thanks, ma'am, house members, city staff is requesting vacation of this portion of unimproved College Avenue, adjacent Lot 26, Lot 25, Taylor and Swallows addition. In order to resolve the issue of the hall at 416 Park Street, which was built partly within the right-of-way of College Avenue in 1880, the city has no use for this portion of College Avenue, and due to the seat train, it is unsuitable for a city street, and that's all I have, unless council has questions, I move.
Okay. Starting with Mr. Goodall, do you have any questions for Georgie?
I have no questions.
Ms. Ogletree?
So, Georgie, we are simply vacating the right-of-way, we're not vacating the ownership of the land or anything like that, correct?
Well, when, when you vacate the property, the Los Angeles County assessor divides that right-of-way in half and gives it to the adjoining property owner, so the city would no longer have ownership of it.
Okay, so then, in this case, half of it will go to the property owner and half will go to the other side, and that's true of the next one as well, correct?
Yes, that's correct.
That's the only question I have, thank you.
Mr. DeBono? Ms. Gregor?
I just have a question, Georgie, are the two parties that are going around this vacated land, are they aware of what we're doing?
Yes, all the adjoining property owners have been notified, like certified now.
Okay, I just wanted to verify, thank you.
Mr. Williamson?
No questions.
Uh, Mr. Valentine, this particular property, is that the property that we have been discussing here recently, is that part of it?
That is correct, Mayor, um, the deed that you sent on, I should say, the ordinance that you sent on, it's in the general area, but if you look at the maps contained in your package, it is for that attached area of College Street that was vacated way back, the portions we are considering tonight have never been vacated.
Okay, okay. I just wanted to see if that was the, because we've been dealing with these people for some time now, so I just wanted to make sure that was what we're talking about, so. Is there anyone listening in that wants to speak for or against the ordinance? If not, hearing is closed. Item D1.
Hey, Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor, if I may, Mr. Padilla, who is the adjoining property owner that is vacated, has undid it himself, I don't know if you have something to say?
Uh, Mr. Padilla, did you have a comment?
Well, no, I just wanted to approve of what was going on with the property there.
Okay, okay. Like I said, we'll go ahead and close out the hearing then, and move on to the D1, second reading of inordinance, vacating a 50-foot wide portion of right-of-way of unimproved College Avenue, abutting Lot 26, Block 25, Taylor and Swallows addition, of the city of Trinidad and Los Angeles County. Could I have a motion, please, and I'd like, kind of like what, the way Rushdy presented it earlier as well, if you could, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the vacation of the property.
Okay, could I have a second?
Second?
Any further discussion from council? Not, call the vote, please?
DeBono? Getoff?
Yes.
Vinga?
Yes.
Ogletree?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. Item 6E, public hearing for consideration of inordinance, vacating a 50-foot wide portion of right of unimproved College Avenue abutting lots 23, 24, and 25, Block 25, Taylor and Swallows first addition to the city of Trinidad, Los Angeles County. Public hearing is now open, and Georgie, did you want to have any additional comment on this?
Well, the, uh, the second vacate is also submitted by city staff, and it would vacate the remaining portion of College Avenue, the city will retain the alley located between the previous vacate and this one, in order to access utilities within the alley, and that's all I have.
Okay. Let's go on to council, see if council have any questions, Mr. Goodall?
I have nothing.
Ms. Ogletree?
I have no questions.
Uh, Mr. DeBono? Ms. Gregor?
None.
Mr. Williamson?
No, ma'am.
I have none, is there anyone that is listening in that has a con, that would like to comment for or against? If not?
There, just like, if anybody's called, put in on the phone and needs to speak, star six on mute, you, I just want to give them that opportunity.
Okay, good.
Sorry.
That's okay, that will close the hearing, on to item 6E1, second reading of inordinance, vacating a 50-foot wide portion of right-of-way of unimproved College Avenue abutting lots 23, 24, and 25, Block 25. block twenty-five, Taylor and Swallows first addition to the city of Trinidad, Los Angeles County. Could I have a motion, please?
Mayor, I would to vacate the fifty-foot wide portion right-of-way.
Okay, could I have a second?
Second.
Counsel, do you have any further discussion? Call vote, please?
DeBono? Goodall?
Yes.
Braydon?
O'Gallant, yes.
O'Gallant?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
We go.
Yes. Item F, public hearing for consideration of inordinance, repealing Article seven, vacation proceedings, vacation proceedings, section seventeen dash sixty-seven through seventeen dash seventy of chapter seventeen, streets and sidewalks of the Trinidad municipal code. Hearing is now open. Audra, you spoke on that the last time, do you have, you want to give us a rundown on that, please?
Mayor, when city council adopted chapter fourteen, our new land use code, it contains an article with human code concerning vacation proceedings. After seventeen of the code already had a section regarding vacation proceedings, and so, so the language is not in conflict with others. Staff recommends that the sections seventeen sixty-seven through seventeen seventy, that's chapter seventeen, be repealed.
Okay. Go on to council, does council have any questions, Mr. Goodall?
No, sir.
Ms. Ogletree?
No.
Mr. DeBono? I'm not sure, Mr. DeBono, if you're not muting or muted, or we're getting some echo from your computer, I'm not sure what's happening.
No, sir, Mr. Yeah, I'm fine.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Gregel?
I just want a clarification, so we're just, this is a duplication that we're just cleaning up, correct, Audra?
It's a little bit more than a duplication, our language that was just adopted in chapter fourteen actually will supersede the language that existed in the code, and there are some differences in language.
Okay.
So the new language is what will be in place in chapter, this will be repealed.
Okay, no, I have no questions.
Mr. Williamson?
I have no questions.
Okay, and I have no questions, Bert. Anyone listening in that has, that wants to speak for or against the consideration change to the ordinance? Not? Hearing is closed. F one, second reading of inordinance, repealing Article seven, vacation proceedings, section seventeen dash sixty-seven through seventeen dash seventy of chapter seventeen, streets and sidewalks of the Trinidad municipal code, could we have a motion, could I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve the ordinance repealing Article seven.
Okay. Have a second, please?
Second.
Any further discussion from council? Call vote, please?
DeBono?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Braydon?
Yes.
O'Gallant?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
We go.
Yes. Item G, public hearing for consideration of inordinance, amending Article thirteen, chapter fourteen, to include language previously contained with the Trinidad municipal code and clarify other language. Hearing is now open, Audra, you want to give us some information, please?
So Mayor, this ordinance is a result of the recent adoption of chapter fourteen as well. When city council found this at a point where we were comfortable adopting chapter fourteen, there had been several months, but in the last, in between the times that the code development prepared the ordinance, and it was finally approved, and in that timeframe, city council had made amendments to the marijuana code. And so, they were in a certain way omitted from the land use code at its own adoption. They include the definition of applicant, where we matched what the state's definition is of a tempersat owner, or someone who's otherwise in control of the marijuana business. And then also, language concerning the sales tax, and that is due in this office of the finance director by the twentieth of the month, or there will be a five percent late fee. And then, the same language is also in the marijuana cultivation section, where the cultivation fee is to also sit opposite of the finance director by the twentieth of the month, or they would be subject to five percent late fee.
Okay. Get any questions from council, Mr. Goodall?
I have nothing.
About Ms. Ogletree?
No questions, thank you.
Mr. DeBono?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Gregel?
No, sir.
Mr. Williamson?
None, Mayor.
Anyone listening in that wants to speak for or against the change in the ordinance? Hearing is now closed. Item G one, second reading of inordinance, amending Article thirteen, chapter fourteen, to include language previously contained with the Trinidad municipal code and clarify other language, could I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion from council? Call vote, please?
DeBono?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Braydon?
Yes.
O'Gallant?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
We go.
Yes. Item seven, unfinished business, we have none. Item eight, miscellaneous business. Eight A, consideration of appointment of Chris Miller to the tourism board as recommended by the board. Chris, are you listening in?
Did you say Chris Miller?
Yes.
Yes, I'm listening.
Okay, good, just want to make sure that you are present. Have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Counsel, do you have any questions, Mr. Goodall?
None.
Ms. Ogletree?
No, I do not.
Mr. DeBono?
I just want to say, Chris Miller, he'll be a great addition to the tourism board, and he interviews him, and he adds for the NTRT, and he's a great idea, and I think he'll be really, really nothing to improve.
Good. Ms. Gregel?
No, I have no questions.
Mr. Williamson?
No questions.
And Mr. Miller, I looked at your application, and it looks like you do have considerable experience in tourism, and it's a, it's welcome. Very good to hear that we have someone coming on that's going to be able to add to the experience that we currently have. With that?
Thank you, Mayor, I hope to add what I can, and I appreciate the judge's consideration.
Okay.
Looking forward to it.
Very much, thank you. Call vote, please?
DeBono?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Braydon?
Yes.
O'Gallant?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yeah.
We go.
Yes. Welcome again, Mr. Miller, and go to work, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, item eight B, consideration of Laporta bid, twenty twenty-one operating plan and budget. This is a plan that is to be submitted by the Laporta organization. There were a few minor changes to it, which I'm sure council had an opportunity to go over them. So I'd like to have a motion, please?
I'll move, I'll say move.
Have a second?
Second.
Let's go on to discussion, Mr. Goodall?
I have nothing.
Ms. Ogletree?
I don't have any questions, no.
Okay, Mr. DeBono?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Ms. Gregel?
No, sir.
Mr. Williamson?
None, Mayor.
Okay, and I have none. Could you call the vote, please?
DeBono?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Braydon?
Yes.
O'Gallant?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
We go.
Yes. Item H C, consideration of bid results for the twenty-two dash twenty twenty sanitary sewer trunk line replacement phase two project. You know, we received two bids with a low bid to RMS utilities for one million, forty-seven thousand, one hundred and seventy-three dollars and fifty cents. Could I have a motion, please? Second?
Second.
Discussion, Mr. Beach, are you on the line, were you the person that put together this project? Mr. Valentine, I, doesn't seem like Mr. Beach is on, can you cover that for him?
Sure, so, I'm not sure he is on, I see his, his computer name is acting like a duck. So what this is, is for the sewer trunk line that extends from basically Laporta all the way down to the sewer treatment plant, the portion, almost a mile of line. It was split up in two phases, phase one was the portion through Laporta, my development itself, and second phase two here that's being brought before you is for the bulk of the project to include about four thousand, two hundred and seventy-five feet of line. It is to replace a fifteen-inch clay tile line that's been in service for probably over a hundred years, it needs replacement. It is, it collects, it's a main sewer transmission that collects over a third, if not closer to a half of our city infrastructure for sewer. It takes it to the treatment plant, this is a good project, we were able to secure a grant from DOLA for this project. I would answer any questions from the staff recommendation that we accept the low bid from RMS utilities. For the amount quoted, there is a amount in there just for council's certification for item number four, VNSF flaggers. It is, we did it out for one hour, and they did fifty dollars per hour. Well, we know that this is a hundred and thirty-day project, not all that time is going to require VNSF flaggers, but that, that will add a significant amount to the project. So the overall cost will be, our cost will come in somewhere around one point three million dollars. It is a need that we need to complete, we have the funding from DOLA, recommendation is in the form of.
Okay. Well, let's get some questions from council, Mr. Goodall?
I have no questions, I'm excited to see this project wrapped up and move on to the water.
Okay. Ms. Ogletree?
I'm here, no questions.
Mr. DeBono?
I already have the recommendations from DOLA, moving forward.
Ms. Gregel?
No questions.
Mr. Williamson?
I have no questions, I really appreciated the side-by-side debate comparison.
Okay. I do have a couple of questions, and like I said, it's, did, Mike, are we looking at it's coming in to, in budget to what we estimated?
And that is correct, Mayor. Our first phase, by the way, I didn't mention that RMS utilities did the first phase, and it came in on time and under budget. And this one, it is a construction project, but as bid and as we anticipate, it will be under our estimated budget, so. Long answer to, yes, it came in under.
Okay. Estimated start date on this?
So what happens now is, if the council award, we will notify the contractor tomorrow. They have around two weeks, fourteen days to get all their performance agreements, together their, all their agreements signed, schedule, insurance, all in place, so I would anticipate that it would be mid-November start date on this. The reason we have to, by the way, we have to wait to bid this way down is because we cross the irrigation ditch. So that season is over, irrigation season is over, so now we can get after it, so mid-November, starting.
Okay. Now, you did mention earlier that, and I saw that, that there's going to be an additional, because the bid here is one million, forty-seven thousand, and you did estimate that because of the additional flagging time, which it looks like it could add another two hundred and fifty thousand to this project, is that correct?
That is correct, they saw on, so, it's hard to judge how long a contractor was going to require VNSF flaggers onsite. Basically, the flaggers have to be onsite, for the most part, most of the time, the contractor is there, but there are times when we won't be within the safety zone of the mainline line, so we may not need them. So depending on the contractor, we ask for that, if by the hour, if contractor chooses, at all the hundred and thirty days, at eight hours a day, it comes out to three hundred thousand dollars, in that range, that's why I said the bottom line number could be one point three. But if you compare the other contractor and apply the same scenario, their bid per hour was three hundred and ninety-eight thousand, I mean, three hundred and ninety-eight dollars, as opposed to fifty. So, we, even with that one point three, we're still within our, our budget.
Okay. So are you going to have to bring that back in front of council for that additional amount, which at this point in time, we don't really know what that is?
Generally, we do not, it's not really a change order, because in our contracts, we pay human price for actual work completed. I will confirm with Tom, he's texting me, and his friend, and he's telling me, I don't know why you can't hear me, I'm talking, so I will confirm with him, but if it, if it is something, we will definitely bring before council, if it's going to be out of order.
Okay. Does council have any other questions arisen through council members, raise your hand? Mr. Williamson?
I did have a quick question, that VNSF fee for flagging, that's not a fee provided by VNSF, that's provided by the contractor?
That is provided by the contractor, and it could be as much as twenty-five hundred dollars a day to advocate VNSF will point the onsite, whether it's live or not. So, yeah, it's a requirement of our permit process, and there's no getting around it.
Oh, no, I understand that, I just, I didn't follow the discrepancy, if it was a VNSF fee, how would it be different between the two vendors?
Yeah, we couldn't figure that one out either.
I'm just thinking the expenditure might be more than anticipated at all.
Any other questions? Call the vote, please?
DeBono?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Braydon?
Yes.
O'Gallant? Williamson?
Yes.
We go.
Yes. Item D, executive session for a conference with the city's attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specific legal questions under CRS section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, four B, regarding economic development incentives, motion to go into executive session.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion on that? Call vote, please? Call the vote, please?
DeBono?
Yes.
Goodall?
Yes.
Raydell?
Yes.
O'Gallant?
Yes.
Williamson?
Yes.
Rico?
Yes. We do have a D1 coming up after that for the consideration, and we'll have a vote on it. So at this point in time, what we'll do is, I know Tom Murphy is here, and give him some time to, you know, clear the room, turn off his equipment, and then he'll probably want to come back and record what that D1 answer is. So take about a five-minute timeframe, or 10 minutes, and we will reconvene. Thank you.
The council does a need to disconnect upstairs next, and we'll have to, actually can you impress a bell to get back? And impress a bell, and we'll, we'll turn the records upstairs.
So are, are we?
So anyone but the mayor can disconnect, and then some of the mayors, if that's the one, will get the audible recording.
So, Audra, we have council reports and city manager, city attorney report. We'll do that from the mayor's computer.
You can, or if you want to leave yours on, and go back to your offices, too. Anyway.
I would suggest if you keep yours on, everybody mute, and, CM, I'm the opposite, council members.
Okay.
Thank you.
Tom, give us some minutes to?
So, you want me to come back, then?
Yeah, because we do have a vote, if you want it.
Yes.
And...